Good evening and welcome to the Watchman's Report. I'm Cody Higley and tonight I'm joined by our regulars, Jason Foreman, Robert Landon, and tonight's special guest is Anthony Azariah, who is the Democrat candidate for the Sixth Ward Council seat. So Anthony, welcome to the Watchman's Report.
Yeah, thanks for having me, guys. You know, thanks for allowing me to share the message with your guys' constituents and hopefully my constituents in November.
Yeah, we're happy to have you. Just kind of a laid back format here on the Watchman's Report, where we bring on guests, get to know their backgrounds, who they are as people, and then also discuss the hot topics of the day. So Anthony, with that in mind, tell us a little bit about yourself. As I understand it, you were born, bred, and raised in Marion, is that correct?
Yeah, so I was born in Marion, raised in Marion, product of Marion City Schools, graduated from Harding in 2018. Been here all my life but a year. I spent a year down in Panama City Beach, Florida. I came home to family and I don't think I'd go back.
Where'd you go to college?
Uh, so I'm currently in college for social work at Grand Canyon University.
Okay, are you doing like an online program then?
Yep.
And is it in education or what's your, what's your?
Uh, social work.
Social work, okay. Now, you're employed with the Marion City Schools currently, is that true?
Yes, so I've been with Marion City for three years. I've worked in special ed, I've worked now at Grant Middle School in the media center. So I'm the librarian of the middle school.
Cool. Oh, nice. Oh, nice. So do they even have like real libraries anymore, or is it all just computer labs?
So it's an actual library. Um, you know, I have.
Huh? With books?
Yep, I have about a collection of about nine thousand books, surprisingly, and.
And the kids read them?
A hundred and sixty-two have read so far, so we're trying to get that number up.
Oh, wow. Oh, wow. So what's your favorite part of working for Marion City Schools?
You know, building the relationships with the students and the families. Um, you know, I think that is one of the most rewarding jobs. You know, I did special ed for two years and seeing those kids grow. You know, they bring about something within yourself that you didn't know you had, you know, dealing with kids. I never thought I could work with high schoolers, never thought I could work with middle schoolers. But each day is a new day and sometimes you want to run home and scream. But then there's days that you see the growth in the kid and it's rewarding.
So what age group has been more difficult to deal with? Is it the middle schoolers? Is it the high schoolers? Really? Is it just the immaturity level or what do you think?
I think so, yeah. I think it's the immaturity and, you know, not having that understanding about life is and.
So what is, what have you learned? I mean, you're a young guy. You're what, twenty-five? So what has that experience taught you about, I guess, society in Marion presumably? Because I mean, I know you're born, bred, and raised here, but dealing with the next generation of kids and citizens of the city of Marion, like, have you learned anything? Has your perspective changed on the city?
Absolutely. I mean, you know, I've always done some type of customer service facing, you know, so I've dealt with Marion my entire life. Um, but I think working in the schools, you definitely can see the struggles more. You know, I see kids that not everyone else gets to see. Um, I s- I deal with issues that not everyone's gonna see. And I think, I told someone the other day that I think parents should have to come into the school at least once and realize what other kids go through. It's not just their kid. Um, so that's taught me that there's all different backgrounds here in Marion, some that we are not even aware of. It's taught me more empathy, I think, because I have to be empathetic of kids and understanding that they don't control their life, they don't control the home situation. They're just a product of it, unfortunately.
If you were to, um, just guess, just off the top of your head, how many kids in Marion City Schools come from what society would term a dysfunctional family or home life?
Well, over seventy-five percent, I'd say.
So an overwhelming majority?
Especially here in Marion City. Yeah, I mean, you, it's not, you know, Delaware and, you know, Marion City is a rough, you know, but we do have our hidden gems. So I think overall our kids have to face adversity from the beginning and not many people realize that. I think being in the role that I am will allow me, you know, moving forward into the election, because I see that every day. I see the impact that our kids face and, you know, I know my opponent works for the city schools as well, but I see it more every single day in the front line of, you know, there's kids that sometimes don't get food and that's their one meal. Some of them don't shower. Um, so being able to address that hands-on has probably been very rewarding.
Have you noticed improvement? I mean, you worked there for what, three years, you said?
Yep.
Have you, is it staying the same largely? Are you seeing improvement? Um, or is it declining?
There's definitely ups and flows, you know, some, some days you, or some weeks you may hear it every day and there may be months in between that you don't. So there's ups and flows for sure.
Now, I know that discipline issues were kind of a primary focus of, I think, the prior school board race, or maybe the last two. Um, have you noticed improvements in the disciplinary environment at Marion City Schools, or has that really not changed much?
I'm gonna have to, I think it all depends on who is handling the discipline. Um, you know, if you have a hard.
Administrator?
Yeah, it would all depend only on the administrator, I'd say.
Okay.
But then also the relationship with the kid as well, you know, because if you have an administrator who butts heads with the kid, you're gonna have the disciplinary, or teacher even, you know.
Yeah. So, uh, been with, uh, Marion City Schools for three years, went to, went to Harding, currently, um, taking classes to, are you working on your bachelor's? Is that what you're working on? When are you set to graduate?
Um, in a couple of years. I decided to take some time off, longer than I should have, but.
Well, you got some other things going on, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you married? Are you in a, uh, significant relationship?
Yep, so I have a partner. Um, we've been together for a while. Um.
How long?
Six months, so so far, but yeah. A while, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
So, uh, as I understand it, you kind of got into politics at an early age.
Mm-hmm.
And you talk about your, was it something that your family exposed you to? Was there a moment in your life where you realized, hey, I've gotta get involved? Like, tell us about your political awakening.
So, being, and, and I think this is also another thing that allows me to connect with the children a little bit better. Uh, my mom was a drug addict for eleven years. Um, and so I got to see, unfortunately, firsthand what the effects had, right? And I don't know if you guys remember back, I don't even, twenty-fourteen, when we had the heroin epidemic here in Marion. Um, that was really, so I was fourteen at the time. The first involvement that I had in community service. I really wanted to connect with the younger kids. We have school programs, you know, like JTI, TI, all those different things, right? We have DARE back in the day, all that stuff. But we never.
Question?
Yeah.
So she, you said your mother was a drug addict and you're referencing when you were fourteen. Had she been a drug addict for the prior eleven years, or is that when she started was?
So, sorry, from fourteen, she was an addict for eleven years.
Oh, starting in fourteen?
So, two thousand and three to fourteen.
Gotcha.
Most of your life?
So most of my life, yep. Most of my life. Um, she got clean in two thousand and fourteen and been sober for eleven years now, so.
Well, congratulations.
Yep, she's doing very well. Um, but we didn't really have the support for children who were affected, right? We had the prevention programs. But where do the kids go that are affected, right? Um, that's when I wanted to start a support group for kids like myself. Being fourteen, coming to city administration, coming to these higher powers, right? They're not gonna really listen to a fourteen-year-old. Um, but I wasn't gonna stop. I had created events, I brought speakers in from Columbus. We had a gentleman whose son had overdosed. Um, he was in high school. He spoke to the entire high school and he spoke to about twenty parents. Um, so that was really my push for community service. Um, and then when I graduated, twenty eighteen, I was like, I really wanna do this politic thing. Um, was gonna run for mayor, decided not to. I was like, that's kind of adventurous at eighteen. And, you know, it's always been on my mind since then and life finally decided to slow down a little bit and now's, and I decided to run.
So were you, um, close with your father? Was he in your life?
Yeah, I mean, I've been close with both parents. Um, so I mean, both my parents, we had a close relationship, but there was definitely the, the trauma.
Sure.
So you, uh, consider running for mayor at the age of eighteen, kind of kickstarted or encouraged by your involvement with the, would you say, anti-drug or?
Yeah, I'd say so, yeah.
Yeah, um, support programming. Then here what in February, you decide to launch your candidacy as the Democrat candidate for the Sixth Ward Council. Was that something that, so in the meantime, between what, two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and twenty-five, were you actively involved in the local Democratic Party? Were you kind of on the sidelines? Did they come to you? Tell us about that.
I was more on the sidelines. Um, you know, I, like I said, I had spent a year in Florida, so I was kind of disconnected a little bit there and you know, life had happened, my grandfather passed away at the time and all that stuff, but um, this year I went to a Democratic Club meeting and realized that, well, first off, I realized that our city was in trouble, right? That was the first thing, hey, I need to run. Then I realized nobody was running, so I went to a Democratic Club meeting and I was like, hey, where are the candidates? And like, we don't have any yet. So that's when I decided, the thought process, and that was at the end of twenty-four, so like in November is kind of when I had started that talking and planning stage.
What has been your experience with the local Democratic Party? I mean, they've, it's safe to say they're kind of in disarray at the moment, correct? As far as not fielding, not fielding candidates for a majority of the races. Um, I think it's pretty safe to say that right now they're kind of in disarray. Have you had a positive experience with the Democratic Party? Is it something where they need, in your opinion, to take a, a new approach? And if so, what do you think that would be?
I mean, statewide, I've, I've had an opportunity to meet with several Democratic Parties, you know, um. It's an issue, not just statewide, nationally with Democratic Parties. I think locally, there's just been a burnout. I think with Democrats, um, we had, two years ago, we had a great slate of candidates and not one of those seats were filled, but second ward. So I think that could be discouraging, right? I can't speak to, you know, their feelings or their thoughts, but certainly if I was on a long slate and nobody was elected, right, that would be very discouraging. Um, so I think kind of this election, having someone like myself out there really trying to push, you know, I've been out there since January, push for, you know, Democrats to run, um, hopefully puts a breath of fresh air under their wings.
Do you think that you'll, that we'll see more Democrats running in the municipal elections, you know, in the coming years, or what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so I can't say much. Um, but we're definitely talking about, you know, who can we get ready for that next cycle? You know, we have people already interested in running, so how can we get them ready? How can we get the next generation essentially ready for running?
So this, this election coming up on November fourth, it's pitting you as the challenger against the incumbent Republican Councilman of the Sixth Ward, Ron Prater. And then we also have, uh, some, uh, contested races at the at-large council positions. So, what, Scott Kreider and then, um, Halloran? And is that it for the Dems?
Yeah, just Scott and, uh, Kent is a write-in, but Scott Kreider's running at large and, uh, Ken Halloran is a write-in, yeah.
And then they're gonna be facing off against, uh, what, Danny Clark?
Bill Dikdul and. Um, yeah.
Anthony, I gotta ask, uh, so obviously Sixth Ward is heavily Republican or traditionally, and surprisingly, uh, Councilwoman Kathy Swanger, a few years back actually won that seat. So, I mean, it's not unheard of, but that was the first time Cory, or Cody's the historian here, he would know better than me. I know it's been years since we had a Democrat Councilperson in that ward. Why would you pick?
Never happened.
Never happened.
Never, ever, ever.
So why would you, given the odds or the mathematical possibility, why would you pick Sixth Ward as opposed to at-large? Would, could you tell us your thought process on that?
So, in full transparency, I think coming in, it was like, yes, it's unheard of, but it's never a no, right? Now.
Yeah, Swanger did it as an independent, so I mean, it's possible.
Being a, a Democrat and a newcomer in, in the arena, am I gonna wanna face one person or am I gonna wanna face five or six?
Sure.
So I think that's, that was my strategy, strategy of, yeah, Sixth Ward is heavily Republican, Sixth Ward is, you know, traditionally, and that's kind of why I wanted to go hit the ground running in January, get my name out there, let people know that I'm accessible, let them know that it doesn't matter, party lines.
Yeah.
I'm gonna represent you and hopefully that makes a difference.
Well, and I think, um, to that point, I think part of it too is, uh, who is the incumbent in that particular position? I mean, when you look back at, I think it was in two thousand and fifteen, uh, our current county prosecutor Ray Grogan ran for, uh, the city law director's position against Mark Russell. And I think he got beat pretty sizably. And now he's the, he's the county prosecutor. Um, and when you look at, uh, two thousand and eight and, uh, two thousand and fifteen with the mayor race, uh, I think Schertzler, uh, at that, uh, time was running against Jean Hoffman, I believe, Cody. And you know, she was up there in age at that time and was probably not able to get out as much as she would like. So, and, and he beat her pretty sizably. And so I know in, in Republican circles, there were talks like, hey, if we could have put somebody up there that was maybe younger, more energetic, had the ability to get out there and resonate with the voters, they had a real chance at beating, uh, uh, former Mayor Schertzler. And the same thing with when, uh, the time when you ran for mayor, um, and there were Stu McGowan, you had Kevin Norris and Sue McGowan kind of took some of those votes and, uh, had that not happened, you know, Kevin Norris had a pretty good chance at, uh, beating, uh, Schertzler. So I think, you know, to your point, I think it, it matters who that incumbent is.
Yeah.
Uh, but again, you know, you do have a, a higher odds with, with the, uh, at-large race, um, with three people. Um, you know, I think you had, have, have some pretty good shots there. So if you don't win Sixth Ward, do you think there's a potential run for you in the future for at-large?
Yeah, I'm definitely, you know, even, you know, I don't wanna say for sure, but I mean, there's an election every year, so who knows? Be a county seat, it could be an at-large seat. I just know that ultimately I want to help change Marion and I think that, you know, regardless who it is, I think that should ultimately be what we're all in it for, is to help the betterment of the city.
So, I think it's safe to say that probably ninety percent of Marion's thirty-five thousand people and roughly eighteen thousand are registered to vote, uh, have no clue what's going on in the city, probably have no clue who their councilman is. So if you were to run into one of those eighteen thousand people who is otherwise clueless and they lived in the Sixth Ward, what's your sales pitch to get them to show up to the polls to vote for Anthony Azariah as opposed to staying home and just allowing Ron Prater or voting for Ron Prater? Tell people why you would be different and why the change is needed to switch from Ron Prater to Anthony Azariah.
Yeah, so I mean, I've encountered, you know, that already. I think, you know, we have a lot of uneducated citizens, and I say that the nicest way possible. A lot of people do not know what is happening, right?
That's not just Marion. That's.
Correct, that's, that's everywhere, right?
That's everywhere.
So we have that and I think, one, educating them on, this is what is at stake, you know, you have city government, you have federal government, et cetera. Um, and I mean, honestly, I could just show them a twenty-second video of city council meeting and I think they would understand, but I don't think that questions that need to be asked are being asked, right? You know, we, and even thinking of the Sixth Ward, more higher value homes, right? So chances are we're paying more taxes. Where's your money going? And I'm saying that the nicest way, you are paying money. We don't have any idea of where it's at, right? So we need to fix that. Why are we not asking the questions? Why are we not holding people accountable that aren't taking the trainings? Why are we not holding them accountable that frankly aren't doing their job?
I think.
Go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead, Anthony.
And I think as somebody who is representing a ward, you should be asking the questions. It shouldn't just be one or two people, it should be every single person at that table.
And that's a great point. I'm glad you actually raised that, because I do, I do agree, agree with you on that. I think we do need more questions. We need to be asking the right questions. I was just talking about this recently about we, for so many years, you know, especially since my tenure, when that all got hotly debated, that whole issue. Everybody wanted to talk about what the issue was, but nobody wanted to provide a solution. And, you know, maybe if you recall, when I was in the auditor's office, we tried to create the Center for Community Engagement Transparency, where we wanted to put everything out there so everybody could see how your money was being spent. I wanted dashboards, we, I mean, there's all kinds of stuff, not gonna get into that right now. And where's that effort to revisit that, that initiative, you know, especially given uh, the issue we're having with the current auditor and the deputy auditor and the lack of transparency and willing to answer questions? Why are we not forcing somehow, whether it's through the auditor or city, city council or the mayor? Why would we not try to put out what we do have? I understand, you know, they're, they're questioning with some uncompleted audits, but the last thing you wanna do is just hunker down and say, okay, we don't know anything.
Yeah.
Well, that doesn't really earn trust either. It's, why not, let's put out what we have, we're doing our best to track everything and, and, and go from there. What do you think about that? Why would we not be putting information out there to at least try to earn trust of our constituents?
I, I don't know. I mean, I think, you know, going to your point, and, and I mean, I understand that in government, we inherit things, right? And it, no matter what level, right?
Mm-hmm.
But if you don't try to fix it, that's where you need to be held accountable.
Mm-hmm.
If you just keep blaming the previous person,
Mm-hmm.
that's where the issue lies and that's where I don't think we are doing the citizens of Marion a debt of service.
Mm-hmm.
It's because we keep trying to pass the buck.
Right.
And I think like, to your point of, this is what we have, this is where it's going. You know, I mean, I'm looking at, and I understand that budget, whatever, but if you look at those receipts, hundred dollars on Amazon, whatever, why? And I understand it's office supplies and the small things, but we need to get down to those small things.
Sure.
Right? Why are we spending frivolous money that we may not have?
Yeah.
We don't, you know, there's always the questions.
Oh, and just to play devil's advocate, and Cody, I'll give it back to you here, I just wanted to mention this. Again, to play devil's advocate, I think they, we know where the money's going, you know, for, I would think for the most part, I haven't seen anything. Uh, I think there's some questions about how we're spending money, certainly, and rightfully so, we can all debate that. Um, you know, everything's tracked. The biggest issue is we have somebody saying we're concealing payments and then it's like, okay, well, what else are you concealing possibly? We don't know. And that really damages credibility and trust. Um, but I just wanted to kind of play devil's advocate there too. I think, you know, it's not, um, a hundred percent lack of transparency or anything. I think, uh, especially with Mayor Bill Collins and what I know about him, I think he has every intention and desire to fix the issue and, um, he wants to be transparent. I think, um, there's obviously some apprehension, uh, because you're, sometimes you can be afraid of not knowing what you don't know, so to speak. Um, so I just wanted our, our listeners to kind of hear that, that I think we, we know for the most part where everything's going. It's just, uh, we could have greater transparency into things, and then also, you know, we obviously gotta get the audits fixed too, and I think that's what's creating some uncertainty still.
Yeah.
So how would you rate? Councilman Ron Prater's. Performance. If you were to. Rate it on a scale of. One to ten.
I'd say a three, four. You know, shows up and. He votes. But I, I don't, I don't know if there's enough. I- is that enough just to show up and vote?
So has he made any positive contributions, like? Does he, is he deserving of any accolades? Do you think?
I'm, I'm not going to. Say no, but I'm also not gonna say yes, you know, I don't wanna. Be. Nasty and political, you know. I'm just not aware of any, if there are.
Yeah. How's the campaign going? Have you been, how many houses have you hit, how many? Hands have you shook, how many babies have you kissed?
Uh, so. Hit a lot of houses, uh last weekend, the Ohio Democrats, um several of them. Uh, came up and helped knock some doors. Um. I was at the popcorn festival, I was at the fair every day. Um. I actually kissed a couple babies, my brother brought some of his kids over, so. Um.
You gotta watch that nowadays.
Yeah. Yeah, um. I think it's been. For my first run, I think it's been pretty. Pretty well, I've learned some things. Not to do next time. I've learned.
Like what, like what?
Don't book an event without getting a contract, for sure.
Is that what happened with, was it drag me to the bar or something?
Though, yes, we were, we were gonna have an event, and I didn't get a contract with the queens and several of them canceled. Due to personal issues, and so. I was getting ready to walk out the door with the food and.
So you didn't have any. Drag queen performers for the event, is that what happened?
No, we had, we had performers, yeah, and they. Decided not to. Come up and perform the day of, so.
Well, uh, why was that?
They didn't understand what donation meant. They thought they were gonna get tips, and I had to explain to them, no. And. So there was kind of a miscommunication. Whether it be my part or their part, but.
So. You did raise some money, I think, what, a hundred and thirty-two dollars and some change or something like that?
Yep, so I raised, so totally, it was like two something. Um, and half of that was one thirty-seven. Uh, went to Trans Ohio. Um. You know, being a member of.
Why, why, why did you pick that particular group?
Um, so being a member of the LGBTQ community, um, I can see that. Trans. Individuals are targeted a lot. Um, we don't focus on. The networks and the support system for them, so. I know there's a lot of benefits down at Columbus for it, and I wanted to. Bring awareness locally. Around the issue, so.
Anthony, are you a part of, uh, we've seen the, uh, I think it's called the Marion Area LGBTQ. Coalition, are you, did you found that uh organization, or are you like a leader in that?
I did not fa- uh, found it, but I was on the board for a short time, and then once I decided to enter. Uh, the race and it started to pick up, kind of separate the two. Being a nonprofit. We decided that it would be best, well, I decided it would be best if I just separated myself. To make sure there was no gray lines.
Sure. Strategically speaking, um, you know, cuz it does take a lot of tact when you're running for politics, of course. What was your thought process behind that? Did you feel like maybe, hey, I'm just being true to myself? And my values, and I want my constituents to know that. Um, do you have second thoughts about that, that maybe we could have went a different route to try to bring in support from a broader base? Can you kind of answer that?
Yeah, so I mean. I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, we have a lot of. A lot of hate here in Marion, a lot of hate nationally, right? Um. But I think that's where. Like you said, I want to be true to myself. I don't think it's fair for the constituents to not know who they're voting for. Right, you need to know. What you're getting. And. That's who I am, and. You know, ultimately, if that's what cost it, then. So be it, right? Um, but at least they were aware, and not that they have to know, right, not that it's their business or anything, but. If I'm running on. Transparency and everything like that, I can't. I, the biggest part of my life.
Sure.
So is, in your opinion, is. Sexuality or. Orientation, is that. Relevant. In local politics? And if it. Isn't. Why do you think that? You should, uh, or why do you think it's important? To. Propose it. And I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just saying like, what's your thought on that? And. If it is relevant. How do you? How do you incorporate that? Into. Your position. In local governance.
I think that's. That could be a double. End of question. Um, or answer, so. It is, but it isn't, depending on who you ask, right? Some people are like, I don't care, but then there are people that are like, no. I don't want someone. Like that representing me. And unfortunately, that is how it is nowadays. Um. You know, even as a teacher. I don't want. Anyone like that teaching my children. Um. So bringing that to the forefront of, hey, there's still hatred, there's still bigotry and. Homophobia, there's, all that is still prevalent in society, right? And letting those. People know that I'm not gonna hide who I am just because you don't like it. But then also, at the same time. Being an educator. I want to show my students that they can be. Who they are without fear. And seeing their teacher, who's an openly gay man, run for office. Is one of the. Biggest things to do that, right? Especially in Marion. Or a small town, regardless of where it is. So. Let them know that they still. Are. Accepted and still loved. Even. If there are people behind them yelling at them and. Calling their names, I still want them to feel safe.
So would that be part of. Your. Local legislative efforts or like policy efforts, or is it strictly an element of. Pride and expression. During your campaign?
I think for sure, um. You know, once I'm in office and. I would definitely be open to looking at. What policies can we enact to make sure that. All of our community members. Feel. Safe, feel heard and feel. Like they belong here in Marion, right? Because if they don't, they're gonna leave, and. We don't want that, we want them to stay, and economically, that's gonna help, and just overall, it's gonna create a sense of community. So I'm definitely open to looking at. What legislative options we have.
What do you think that would be? I mean, just at this point, I know you would have to do additional. Study on it, but. Just what, what. Comes to mind.
So I've seen, um. Around the state even, you know, we have advisory councils. Um. For LGBTQ, um. African Americans, Hispanics, so kind of create a multicultural. You know, advisory council. Let, let us know where we need to tighten up.
Yeah.
Is there any indication, like how many, how large is the LGBTQ, like self-identifying, I guess outwardly? I suppose, community in Marion? Or, there's like Trans Ohio have statistics on that, I mean, I've seen generational statistics as far as like. Gen Z, Gen Alpha, you know, huge increases compared to prior generations. Um, is that something that like an outfit like that keeps at a municipal level as far as their data tracking?
I don't think Trans Ohio would, but certainly the coalition, they would. Have a better answer. Than I would off the top of my head, uh, but we do have definitely a high. You know. Population. Here in Marion.
What would you say as far as estimates for that? Population? We talking like. Single digits as far as the overall, you know.
I'd say. We have well over. I'd say. If not over a hundred, close to a hundred, and I know that's. Not a lot, but. If you're thinking of it, it's. And student-wise, I mean. We have a large number. Well into the double digits at the local schools.
At Harding?
All over, yeah.
The city schools, yeah. Well, um. What? So we already kind of touched a little bit. As far as city council. And some of the issues within. The auditor's office, the treasurer's office. Uh. What other? Issues in. Marion city government, do you think are like? The big deals? And. How would you recommend? Tackling them?
I think. You know, first off, financials, we've, we've covered that, right, and I think. Until we get that under control. I, I don't think we. Have any. Resources to go anywhere else, I think all the resources should be on that, um, but I think. I'd say. Let's look at. Our codes, make sure we're up to date on our codes. Um, handling the blight in Marion. Holding those landlords accountable. That don't take care of the property. Um.
I'm gonna interject something here, cuz, cuz you brought it up, and it's, it's, you know, I might forget about it, I'm, I'm getting old, Anthony.
Uh, you got them started now.
Yeah. See, this is great, come on. Uh. What's your opinion on the establishment of a? Building. Code department. For commercial. Properties. That's currently under debate in council. Would you be in favor of that? You talk about blighted properties now, that's residential. And right now, that's like the, the big stressor is that we're not gonna do this for a residential billing code. But we want it for commercial, what's your thoughts on it?
I think. You know. We definitely need some type of code enforcement for residential. And I know they're like, we're not gonna do residential, whatever. But that's where our biggest effect is, right? Because. When you have landlords allowing people to live in mold, allowing them to live. In houses without electricity and. Who's holding them accountable, right? They're just keep rotating out of tenants. So I do believe that we do need some type of accountability and code enforcement. On the residential side.
So you would be in favor?
I would, yeah.
That, uh, was a huge issue back in, what, two thousand or two thousand and two? And.
Two thousand, yeah.
It went. To repeal it, cuz they actually passed it, and then there was a ballot initiative circulating petitions, collecting signatures. The whole nine yards. And it goes up on the ballot, and it got slammed down like sixty. Sixty-some percent to like thirty-some percent. And. The city of Marion has. Other examples in its history where the government was trying to. Tap into that revenue source. And. The people in Marion constantly revolted, they did not want it. And, uh, I mean, I get what you're saying, I mean, definitely you want people to. You still have. The ability to, you know, to sue in a court of law if there's any issues with, you know. A property like that, but. So on the commercials, so since you're in favor of the residential building code, would you be in favor then? Because the commercials. Less of a stickler for people. Now, the only. The only thing that people are starting to. Kind of speak up about is. That it's gonna triple the cost. To the contractor developer for these commercial properties. And then there's a question of why is this even really necessary? When, you know, the state of Ohio. Offers those inspections and offers. That code enforcement. Currently. Why do we need to create our own department in the city contracted with a. Third-party private company to do the inspections, just to. Potentially, I mean, that's what they're saying, it's gonna increase the turnaround time. But it's worth it, beca- even though it's gonna cost like three times as much money. Um. So it's kind of one of those things where is it really? Needed, I think they said eight. Permits or like drawn a month or something like that, wasn't that the figure Landon J?
Somewhere around there.
It was small, and you gotta think there's only a handful of people that are. Developing. Commercial property within the city limit.
Yeah.
So. What, what are your thoughts on, so you, if Anthony Azariah is sitting in that seat, and it comes and they say. Create. A building code department. And we're gonna start with commercial, you're voting yes? And then are you gonna advocate then and say? While we're at it, let's do the residential, or would you wait for the administration to propose it, or how would you handle that?
So. Obviously, we all want e- economic growth, right? And if you. And I don't wanna say too much without looking into. The pros and cons of both sides, right? Um. But. If we have that red tape. For businesses that wanna come in. That's gonna get out that Marion has red tape after a tape after a tape. When we can go to Delaware. Pay less money. And get it three times faster. Or where, at the, any other city. So. Obviously would have to take a lot of investigating, like. Is it gonna benefit us? In the long run? What is? What is the businesses going to endure? Because we want them to come into Marion. So. How is this going to affect their experience? And are they gonna try to tell people, well, don't go to Marion because you have X, Y, and Z that you have to go through? Or is it gonna be like, yeah, Marion is easy to get into? And we are. Stable enough.
Yeah, and I think that. I mean, they're, they're still. Discussing things.
Mm-hmm.
We've heard from. The representative of the. Uh. Contractor. That, that is offering to, uh, sign up and handle, you know, the city to give them a contract to. Do all the inspections and that sort of thing on the city's behalf. Heard from that individual, I think twice. And then we heard from one very prominent. Uh, developer who focuses downtown, and we heard from one contractor. I think that. This is the type of situation where. Shouldn't council like reach out? Send invitations, solicitations, and say, hey. You're a, you're a contractor in town, you're a developer. Uh, come in, come in to this meeting. We wanna hear from you, do you think that? I know it's been done in the past. But don't you think something like that should be a situation where? You actively like. Reach out as a member of council. Or the administration and say. Come on in and let's. come on in and let's, let's talk about this. Pros and cons, like you said.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, I think getting the community involved at every level of government. I mean, obviously there's going to be things that they aren't privy to, right? But as much as they can be, bring them in, let them feel like they are making the decision on their own. That you are not barking orders just because I hold the golden key. I'm going to tell you what to do. Get there and put there the professionals. I don't know anything about building codes. Tell me what it's, what we can do.
Right. And I think that's, you know, that's the wise approach is to defer to people with, within that trade, within that business and, you know, because yeah, that guy that comes and he's saying, oh yeah, we can do this and we can do that. He's a salesman. He's trying to sell you something. So, you know, you listen to him too, but you utilize those other professionals uh, in your community to help you better understand the topic. And then you can ask more pointed questions of that salesman. Um, I'm going to kind of rapid fire just a couple of things off here. Uh, Economic Development Director, Anthony Azaria, Councilman from the sixth ward, are you voting in favor of creating that position? And if so, why? And if not, why?
So obviously we need economic growth to sustain ourselves. Um, do I think a hundred and twenty thousand dollars with no degree? I don't think so. Um, but we, we need.
Yeah, you could be our Economic Development Director. Get the hell in there.
Um, you know, and then going back to the I'm not going to keep paying you a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for 10 years with not reaping benefit. So where's that accountability going? Hey, you're five years in, you're a year in. You haven't shown us anything.
So I remember back when I was on council, we kind of had a talk about this, uh, some of us did. And I remember us talking about if we did do this, uh, where there would just be a base salary and then I don't want to say it's like commission, but in a sense like there's some sort of other incentive or bonus, you know, to where it's like, hey, we're not going to give you the rest of the hundred and twenty thousand, we'll give you sixty yearly salary. And then if you can bring in business, great, we'll give you some more money. Uh, but why would we throw a hundred and twenty thousand dollars at somebody that who, who could fail? Because that's kind of what happened with Marion Can Do. I think we were paying them pretty good money. And we wasn't really rece- receiving the results.
At one time it was like eighty grand is what they said at the council meeting. And then I think it decreased uh, during the Great Recession, they dropped it down to forty six or forty five, six or something like that.
But wasn't that before benefits though? Uh, before that, I think it was just eighty. And then if you threw in the benefits package, right? It was like over a hundred.
I bet, yeah, I imagine so.
Yeah.
But so greater controls and accountability under the Economic Development Director, but you would be in favor of the creation of that. Now, would you have that position? Would you be in favor of it being hired by in accountable to the mayor? Or hired by the mayor and confirmed by council? How would you recommend doing that, Anthony?
I think council should have some because at that, at that point, ultimately the citizens, because if you're hired by the mayor, then I mean, regardless, it could be the next mayor, 10 years from now, your best buds. You got the gig, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, no degree. You know? But if you have nine people looking at you saying, hey, you've got to get at least five or six of them to say yes.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the federal level, you know, it's basically a cabinet position. So the president appoints, you know, these cabinet heads, they have to be confirmed by Congress.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't know. I, I think that that's reasonable. But, uh, okay, so next rapid fire. Uh, Tommy Reese, would you kick his butt out? No confidence vote him? How do you deal with him?
I mean, there's there should be something done. I don't have the answer to what that something is. You know, you are now four years in, two years, four years in and you are refusing training. So why do you keep getting paid by the constituents? As, as a citizen of Marion, I'm outraged because I'm paying you and you refusing to do your job.
Yeah. All right, next one. Miranda McGinnis. How do you deal with her?
I don't. Obviously the same way, you know? Where, like, where do we?
Tommy is hanging it up at the end of the year. Miranda, the last interview she did, she's like, I might run for auditor again.
Anthony, what would you say to, uh, the recall idea? Would you support if the charter does not go through and we're not able to get this position converted to a finance director? Would you sup- support a recall effort? Because obviously she thinks she doesn't have to go anywhere. This is kind of like that clerk of courts position we had back in, what, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen at the county. Uh, you know, just somebody that just thinks they don't have the answer to anybody. Would you support something like that?
Absolutely. I think, you know, you are not doing what you were elected to do. Regardless of who we want to fault for this, whether it be auditor, treasurer, deputy auditor, whoever. Ultimately, heads, there need to be answers. And if you can't provide those answers, then you gotta go.
So if you were on council, you know, because they've said it, Mark Russell, to his credit, has said like, hey, guys, you can fill out these affidavits, these sworn statements and I'll file them and argue it in the probate court and we'll get her out of office.
Well, I had made a, I had made a comment, one council meeting. It was mentioned that you need three electors, right? To get someone out of office. There are nine of them.
Right.
So why are we not? And they are qualified electors, correct?
Correct.
So why are nine qualified electors not holding them accountable?
But doesn't that just seem like we might be missing some information? Did we get like a hundred percent confirmation that that's what the code in Ohio really says? Because that just seems like it would be too easy, right? I mean, if we really wanted to just keep pushing people out, you just get a couple of people to say, hey, let's push them out.
Well, you gotta take it, uh, you gotta have, you have to go through that process. You have to take it to the probate court and then it's not like a cut and dry. You've got to convince the judge that there are valid grounds. So they would have to have dereliction of duty or gross incompetence, misfeasance, malfeasance, whatever. Um, whatever that standard is to remove it. And then that judge is going to make a determination. But I think, I believe I've heard Mark Russell say that on more than one occasion. And nobody has done it. So either there is, either they don't believe that the grounds are legitimately there. Which oh, I don't know. I mean, she has repeatedly described her office as garbage. Like I've heard it. He's done interviews and like said that she has no clue what she's doing. And her office is garbage. But if that's not enough to say, hey, maybe we do need to, if this person, if nobody's going to run against her and challenge her for the position that is actually able to do the job, then, you know, I think most people, if you said, hey, I have no clue what I'm doing here. And this is a government, public sector job where I have a duty to the people of Marion. I'm going to, I'm going to step away, folks, you know, i- i- am I wrong, Anthony?
Yeah. And, and I mean, I, I want to, I want to be clear that it doesn't matter who they are, what party. Ultimately, if it was a Democrat and Nazi, then you'd say the same thing, you know, but yeah. If it got to the point.
It's about having integrity.
Yeah.
In addition to competency, but integrity of saying like, I'm going to do the right thing, right?
Right. And I think any, any normal person, like if you had a job for this long and you weren't doing your job, your boss would look at you and say, hey, unfortunately it's not working out.
Absolutely.
You wouldn't give it, be given a chance to keep messing up.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the private sector.
I think a lot of people are probably afraid to run for that office. Honestly, um, there's been so much crazy and anybody that actually knows the history of the financials and and has been around such as the, the elder generation, my mother knows full well of the financial problems because she's the one that, you know, originally brought it to my attention. Well, you know, this isn't new. Um, this is before we came back up in the media again. She was like, this has been going on for forty, fifty years. And of course I had to prove that and we more than proved it. So I would be terrified to run for that office. Um, quite frankly, even if I had some kind of financial background, unless I was like a forensic financial professional of some kind, it's, it's crazy. I have a hard time understanding it. Um, sometimes honestly I have to reach out to Cody. Or, uh, I've even reached out to Landon about some of the stuff and the rest of the team, it's highly complicated. It's just absolute insanity between the IT issues and the financial issues and the political chaos over the decades, which we'll get to, you know, at a later time. But yeah, man, it's, I'd be terrified.
It goes, yeah. And then Jay's absolutely correct. It goes back, you know, a good long while, the dysfunction. And you don't have to, you know, you don't have to read pages upon pages of audits or be an IT genius like Jay to just look around. You say, huh, why is Marion like in such dire straits, you know, uh, for most of my, you know, you're 25. You know, I'm 40. And now neither of us have lived in the glory days when it was a prosperous city. It's relative. I'm not saying that it's all bad or anything like that, but compared to what it looked like fifty, sixty, seventy years ago. And we pass the skeletons on a daily basis. We pass these old, you talked about dilapidated houses and things like that. Well, wasn't that long ago? In the grand scheme of time, that that wasn't a dilapidated house. That was a, a family was living there. They were having Sunday dinners and Christmas gatherings and, you know, it, it was full of life. And that's gone. Well, what the hell happened? And there's so many examples like that, whether it be houses, old factories, old storefronts. You name it. This did not happen overnight. It did not happen in five years. It didn't happen in 10 years. It's been a long time coming. And that's what people have to realize. And you have to say, how do we fix it? How can we move forward? What's our economic development plan? How do we make sure that it gets executed? So it doesn't end up being another can do, which really was thirty three years of can don't. Right?
Yeah.
Right, Anthony?
Yeah.
All right. Now to, uh, another topic of critical importance that most people don't care about. The Charter, Anthony, the Charter. What are your thoughts? I know you're, you're against the Charter. Has that remained consistent? And if, if you are still against it, tell us why it's the worst idea in the world. And then I'm going to give it to my boy up there, Robert, to tell you why the Charter is the greatest idea ever.
I don't think it's the worst, right? I think that it can be done. We've seen great success in counties and cities very close to us, right? My concern is that we are pushing for this charter. We're going to have to send, spend sixty, seventy thousand dollars on a charter. We got to send it out. That's not even going to guarantee that it's going to pass. Right? So are we financially in the right moment to spend upwards of seventy thousand dollars on something that is possibly dead on sight?
That's a, that's actually, that's a great point. So here, here's what my thought to that would be, Anthony, uh, just my perspective. And I, I love this conversation because this is really how we solve problems, you know, coming together, just talking about things.
Running for the Charter Commission, folks. Let's listen to them.
Your shameless plug, Cody.
That's right.
So I really think that, uh, it's kind of like this. If I'm in a financial situation individually, right? You're, you're 25. Let's say you were 20 and you're like, you know what? I'm not really making the most money, but somehow I've got to make more money. I've got to improve my, my personal situation. What do most people do? Well, they might go, go to college and nine times out of ten, they're pick, they're taking out a loan to go to college. They're not seeing that immediate return right away. Um, they might even go to the army, military. Again, they're not seeing that return right away. They got to go through bootcamp and individual specialized training and so on. My point is, is that, and that's a very valid concern that you raised, Anthony. Um, certainly understand that and respect that. I just think that now is the, the perfect time. I mean, my goodness, we've talked about this since two thousand eighteen and it's, I just think it's time we either kind of put up or shut up for lack of a better term here. Uh, as a community, if we really want to change things, now is the time. We have some financial issues. We have political issues. We really can't, you can't even get all Democrats in a room to agree. And you can't even get all Republicans in a room to, uh, to agree. Let alone bringing both sides to the table. That's really not working. And so I think if we're going to fix the problem, we also have to fix the structure. And the fact that we don't have qualified people in office and it's not just auditor and treasurer, could tell you that right now, we're not going to get into that. You have to open up the talent pool. And the fact is, we just don't have people that you can just plug and play into the auditor's office. You can take somebody that is a, uh, is a bachelor's in business right now in Marion and it doesn't guarantee success. I could tell you that right now. There is a steep learning curve in those roles. And so to be able to get to where we want to go with, we're talking about economic development. We're talking about transparency and oversight and all these big goals. We have to have people that we can bring in from the outside. And it's not just because of, of a talent issue. It's also because to be able to start fresh, if we're just recycling people in the community, uh, and then a lot of these people are tied politically to political maneuvers. And it, then it becomes a political gaymanship. And then it becomes, who can we prosecute? And then it becomes, and then, and it's just like, when does it stop? I mean, we all go to church together. We all go to the same school. We're going to the same grocery stores. And we're like at each other's throats over some mistakes or because I don't agree with your position on charter. I mean, this is kind of crazy that we spin our wheels talking about this stuff because everybody really just wants to score points at the end of the day. And it goes back to my point earlier that we just want to talk about the issue because everybody likes to, you know, the quote unquote rage bait term. Everybody wants to rage bait the other person. They get into comments on Facebook and talk about the next person. And it's like, well, okay, you're tough on Facebook, but what did you do to solve the problem either? So I think we have to start fresh. We need people that can come in that has, have experience. And part of that is people feel apprehensive about, uh, well, we don't really know what we're getting. We know that the statutory system is tried and true. Look where that's gotten us. So uh, there is some, uh, irrational fear and there is some rational fear out there. I can understand that because it's a big change. But you can literally take this almost like you have franchise businesses. You can go open up a seven eleven and they got tried and true processes. This is the same thing. We can only choose so many different forms of government. We can't go out here and say, well, we're going to put a two member commission to run the whole city and everything goes through them. No, you at least have to have a three person commission to run city government in that form of government. Uh, you can't say, well, we're going to take council down to one person and then run everything through a strong mayor. You can't do that. So you can't usurp authority in this process. So I'm just addressing, uh, I know I'm kind of speaking a little bit about different things, but I'm kind of addressing some of their irrational fear that's out there. And I think it's not serving anybody any good. I agree, sixty, seventy thousand dollars seems like a lot to the average person because personally, if you've got sixty thousand dollars, that would make a big impact in the city. In the city budget of sixty-seven, seventy million, where are we at now? Seventy, seventy million now? It was sixty-five when I left. Seventy million dollars maybe now. That's point, what, zero one percent of the budget. So I just think it's worth, let's get it on the ballot, let's give it a shot and let's do the best we can. Let's not just look at the finance director, uh, conversion from auditor, treasurer to compliance. Let's look at law director. Cody's mentioned this, uh, in articles and stuff in the past. We don't have the talent pool there. What's our succession plan for that? There's just a lot of things we've got to talk about and this division, um, between candidates for the Charter Commission and the parties is just nonsense and. Um, that's part of the reason why we appreciate you coming on because it gives us a different perspective. And it just helps us continue that dialogue that our community really needs so we can just get to the fact of the matter.
Yeah, I mean, I can.
Oh, go, go ahead, sorry.
I can respect all those points, you know, obviously, you know, you had mentioned, we're not gonna see return right away, right? And I'm open to. You know, whatever comes in November, right? If the citizens want the Charter Commission. Great, let's see what we can do, right? Let's see where we. Can grow from here, because obviously there's only one way. And that's up. Um. So I think having that open dialogue. You know, like you had said, amongst parties, amongst candidates, I think that is very crucial. Having the citizens involved is critical in any form of government. Um. So I mean. Yes, I'm against it only because of the financial aspect. I think it would be a great idea eventually. But right now. Is that, and maybe I'm being naive and, you know, I will acknowledge that. But. I think. To your points, it could work and it would work.
So if it gets on the ballot or if voters approve it. In paneling of the Charter Commission. What changes would you like to see implemented in the city Charter?
I think, you know, obviously the. You know, financial department.
Creation of a Director of Finance in getting rid of the auditor and the treasurer.
I mean, we would have, I don't know if I would say getting rid of, but somewhere we have to come up with. You know, happy medium. I don't want to speak for the commission. I'm not on. The ballot for commission, so I don't know.
And hypothetically, what changes would you as a, as a future councilman potentially? And having to deal with all this crap that comes up. Uh, and then also a voter, an elector in the city of Marion, what would you like to see? The, uh, the, the changes be for the Charter?
I think qualifications. You know, for. Really any office, I think. Um. Term limits, I think is a big one. Um, we can't have the career politicians in here just because you have a name recognition. Doesn't mean anything. You are in it for the politics and for yourself at this point. Um, I think. Making sure that. We understand that we're on the same level. Government-wise, um, we do have the levels. In different titles, but at the end of the day. We're all here for one purpose. And thirty-some people, thirty-some thousand people, we have to answer to. You know, you have to answer the same people that I have to answer to, so why are we not working together? Regardless of, if you're Republican, Democrat, Independent, Libertarian, whatever. We all have to answer the same people, and that's the citizens of Marion. And how are we going to? Create something? That reflects that. How are we going to create something that? Is essentially a living document? Because it is gonna have to change over time.
Right. And that's another thing to stress to people is that it's not, if it is. Passed. If it's implemented. It's not like that's it. It can be and should be reviewed. Every five years, seven years, ten years. And then if you have some big pressing issue, if there's some deficit. Or some big need, then council can propose an amendment. Make the, uh, that go on the ballot, be approved as an amendment. Uh, or the citizens can go out there. It's kind of similar, that process. The amendment process of the Charter is very similar to what the state does with like the marijuana law. That was a citizen ballot initiative to amend the Ohio Constitution. So it's very, it's, it's in essence the same thing. So if somebody, you know, a group of citizens wanted to amend the Charter. Then they go collect the requisite signatures and say. Okay, everybody, you gotta vote on this change, this amendment to our Charter. And if it passes, then it's enacted. So there's definitely, you know, options out there for. Improvement and adaptation. And that's the thing I think that people also need to realize is that so much about. Life. Is about your ability to adapt. You can't stay stagnant, you can't stay status quo, that's. The guaranteed to, I don't know, guaranteed road to damnation. You know, you have to be willing to change in life and adapt to new circumstances and new stimuli. Otherwise, like I said, you're kind of doomed, and we're stuck. With this old statutory system that was dictated to us by. A bunch of politicians in Columbus who probably couldn't point out Marion on a map. And that's a reality of the situation.
Yeah.
All right, giving you some rapid fire, so I'm gonna give you some softballs. Uh, favorite movie, Anthony?
Steel Magnolias.
Steel Magnolias?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, favorite, uh, artist, band, group, musical performer?
I don't know. I don't really listen to music, honestly.
You don't?
Not really, no.
TV show?
Golden Girls.
Golden Girls, that's, that's. That's a classic. All right, Robert, any, uh, closing comments for Mr. Azaria?
Anthony, what would be your final, uh, sales pitch, elevator pitch to, uh, to your potential constituents?
I mean, I hope that they see the progress that I want to enact, um, in November. And I know early voting started, but those who haven't voted, get out and vote. Um, vote early, vote on Election Day, whatever you have to do. Um. But I just hope that they can trust me in. Knowing what is right for the city. Um, I won't have all the answers for sure. I'm not gonna say that I will have the answers tomorrow. But trust in me to at least ask the questions that need to be asked. Trust in me to. Do what's best for you and your family.
Jason, any closing questions, comments?
I just gotta say, I don't know how much you know about the Marion Watch operations, but, uh, we started in the addiction and treatment realm. Around two thousand nine, um, and, uh, it's come a long way since then. Um, I actually have been working with and talking to Mr. Belcher since. Probably before he put the signs out. I can't remember. It's been so long. So when you were describing your, you know, your past issues with, uh. Your family, that really hit me hard, and if you guys ever need any help with the, uh, addiction stuff, let us know.
Yeah, for sure. And let me know if I can give any help.
Well, Anthony, I'm gonna give you the, uh, final words tonight. So do you have a closing statement? For the listeners of The Watchman's Report?
Um, I think I've summed it up, right? You know. Anybody who has some questions, reach out to me. Um, I've always said, I don't care if you're second ward, fifth ward, whatever, my phone is always open. You can find me on Facebook.
What's your, what's your page?
Um, Anthony.
How to find you?
Anthony Azaria for City Council.
And that spelled like, I always say Hank Azaria, is it, is it interchangeable Azaria and Azaria or is one?
So I, people do say Azaria, I like Azaria, but. Um.
So it's tomato, tomato, you're saying?
Exactly. I answered anything, really. Um, some of my kids call me Mr. A, so.
Can we call you Tony Zar?
Sure. Um, I mean, reach out to me. I'm always open, you know. I want to be there for the people. I think that's the biggest thing, and hopefully I have expressed that and allowed your viewers to see that. I am here for them. I'm here for a long haul.
Well, we greatly appreciate you joining us tonight, Anthony, and I encourage anybody out in the sixth ward. Uh, to research the race, research the candidates. Uh, go to his Facebook page. Do you have a separate website too, or is it just the campaign page on Facebook?
Um, it's azariaformarion.com, um, and then same for email, azariaformarion@gmail.com. Uh, I have my.
Swag, all that good stuff they can reach out to you for?
Not so much swag, but signs for sure.
No swag? Come on, man!
I have chapstick, I can give out.
There we go. We're getting ready to go into winter. That may come in handy.
Yeah.
Well, Anthony, thank you once again, uh. Our next show, Jay, who's on our next show? Oh, it's tomorrow.
Yes, Miss Craig.
Great, the big interview with Naomi Craig. So be sure to, uh, check us out. What time are we doing that? Eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock, yep.
Eight o'clock, so. Make sure you tune in for that. You're not gonna want to miss that interview. That's.
Yeah, that'll be, uh, that's such a cra- oh.
Yes, so until tomorrow, folks. This has been Cody Higley with The Watchman's Report. Robert Landon, Jason Foreman, our special guest, Anthony Azaria. And remember. A watchman is always vigilant. Until next time. Have a good night.
Good night. Thanks, Anthony.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.